Check that, yeah. Okay.
Who was that Nash man?
We're good. Okay. For those of you just joining us, we had a little bit of an issue getting online. We do have a new clerk tonight. He'll be our permanent clerk, Matt Edgington. You may see him on the side and he can raise his hand to act like he's waving to people out there. So we're a few minutes, runs a few minutes late so we could get started and get this recorded. We've done our pledge in our moment of silent reflection. Roll call, please. Could you have a new clerk tonight?
Here.
Councilman Saul.
President.
Here.
Councilwoman Traynor.
Present.
Councilman Edmond Burke.
Here.
Here. And Council President Peters, you said, was not here. You have a microphone over there, Matt?
Uh huh, no.
I don't see one, okay. All present except for Councilman Hayes and President Peters. We have minutes, we have two sets of minutes to be approved. The July eighteenth minutes were very extensive and there were some names that had to be corrected. Those have been corrected at this point. And also August first, twenty twenty-four minutes. Accept a motion to approve both sets of minutes at this time.
I'll make a motion.
Second. Councilman Norman moved to accept in a second by Councilman. Any further discussion on these?
No.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye. I don't think your mic's on.
Past minutes here. We have no public hearings tonight. Communications and announcements. Mr. Landon McKenzie has asked to be able to go at this time. He has further commitment. If you'd like to come up to the microphone, please. If you've met our clerk.
I have not, nice to meet you. Thanks for allowing me to go first with the pool still open to debt tonight and then the softball going down there. I'm kinda in a bunch of places at once. So, just wanna talk about Civic Plus. I know it was presented in finance by Eve and then we kinda discussed it at the public service meeting this past Tuesday. Kinda just go over it a little bit more and see if you guys have any questions. Basically, it's, it's a upgraded registration facility, you know, reservation system. Everybody can see, you know, what's available in real time as far as any of the shelters goes, gazebos goes, this room, if it's available to be rented, all the ball diamonds, stuff like that. People would be able to reserve it at any time of the night. They don't even need to really communicate and go through us. I mean, the prices are listed, they create an account, they go ahead and pay online, everything like that. It's, instead of the way it's set up now where they kinda, there's about three or four different steps that somebody has to go through just to, to, to reserve something. You know, basically this would just allow them to reserve, you know, the Cowling Shelter in probably less than five minutes if their account's already created. Plus, they can see if it's available and the date they want, the time they want, everything like that. And then on our end, if, if we need to, you know, close it off for any period of time, if we have the National Night Out, we can always go in there ahead of time, block it out, stuff like that. With the ball diamonds being, all three ball diamonds ready for practices and stuff like that, teams can create counts on there, just go in and reserve them when they need them and everything like that. So it, it'll speed up, they won't need to communicate with us, you know, between eight AM and four PM to get stuff done. They'll be able to reserve stuff whenever, whenever's handy for them. As far as league registration goes, currently, we kinda go through Cognito forms, which is kind of the, the registration thing for everything through the city, you know, whether it's a job, you know, application, whether it's registering for, for volleyball or basketball, you know, or if you got some brush you wanna cut, stuff like that. Basically, once a family creates an account, adds all their kids on it, that information stays on there. You'll never have to enter that information again. So if you wanna sign them up for, for volleyball, you just go in there, click the child you want, go ahead and register them and then pay right away. Currently, Cognito forms does not connect directly with the, the credit card processing company that we do use. So we have to use a link, basically, they have to click here, go to the credit card company and enter in their own information there to pay. And then on our end, then we gotta go in, double check that they did pay on a separate website, get it all printed off and submit it to the auditors, where this will all be on one page. We'll see, it stays with them. One of the complaints is we get, they don't always get responses to say they registered. So some people registered two, three times, just to make sure it went through. Or if you register, but you didn't go to pay, well, I see the registration, so you know, they're good. Well, a week later, then they register and pay. So if I don't catch that they double-registered, then, you know, it could cause problems towards the end of the thing with, with more numbers, you know, I think we're capped out or something like that when reality is we got an open spot, so. Some of the other nice things there is, it's a communication tool. So coaches can communicate with, with the parents of their players through there. I can do the scheduling through there. Everybody will have the access, whether you're on a laptop, computer, phone, you can see everything there. As, as it is right now, my communications primarily through social media, group texting on a phone, or, or you got the, the emails. And through Cognito forms, basically, you operate off an Excel spreadsheet, so. Some of the other things, waivers, waivers can stay on their files. So, you know, if they're reserving the shelter, they can sign the waivers online there. No longer have to kinda, you know, do that, mail it in or do the digital copy through Cognito forms anymore. It's also a POS system that we can use. Past year and a half, we've been using one at the concession stand at the pool, but we've been using a free version, so that's very limited. There's been a few hiccups there, but through this POS system here, it's also an inventory management, so everything could be inventoried there to make sure, you know, every, everything's accounted for.
So clarification, POS being point of sale?
Point of sale, correct.
Okay.
Yep. So like I said, with league management there and a reservation, I think this thing would be, take Parks and Rec to the next step. We've already doubled the amount in reservations for the shelters, gazebos and the ball diamonds this year than we did in twenty twenty-three. I think giving people a lot more access and availability of when stuff's available. We could also increase that number going forward. Is there any questions you guys might have, or?
I think there was a difference in quotes for the amounts, the cost of this program.
So there was, so they know that towards the end of the year, they, they get busy. As far as, so setting it up, that's the, that's the real chore, is getting everything lined up, getting everything loaded on to the website and stuff like that. So they said if, if we could get it approved and basically sign the contract with them, I believe by the end of August here, it, it's basically, there'd be a six thousand dollar savings if, if we'd not get it done in August. And then the other one, I believe if it's, let me check the date. I know it was a three thousand dollar savings if it's, I'm not sure if it was September or October. And then the other one was the flat-out thirteen thousand dollars total to get it up and going and the first year's payment was thirteen thousand dollars. And that's good through the end of the year, I believe. So that, that was the rush to get it on, in front of council and to get it on emergency on that as well. So that way, if it did get approved, we could sign the contract with them and save money.
Do we know, we recently went through the process with Aptig to create a new website. Does Aptig offer anything like this? Can, can we have Aptig do this same thing, use a module like this that they have?
That would be a question for Eve, but I am not a hundred percent sure. This isn't replacing the website. On our website, we don't, would end up being to view online availability, click, click here and then that kinda takes you to the Civic Plus side of it. That would tie into, you know, if they wanted the Cowling Park or if they want Mary Mac Park Shelter, stuff like that.
So those that were at the committee meeting know that when Eve talked about it, that?
Yeah, we, we asked her during the, if we could, if the current system that we have can do what this does and she specifically said no.
So this is just like, almost like an add-on feature where they, the two would work together, Civic Plus and Aptig, where we put it, install it into our website in a roundabout way and then it would work together.
Okay, thank you.
The other thing I, I would like to say about it and Mr. McKenzie said during the, the public service meeting was that his current way to, for people who are practicing on those fields is he, they practice and he invoices them. So basically, they're paying after they play, pretty much. Whereas this system, they'll be paying upfront as soon as they log on, pick the, picket, they pay that fee at that time, correct?
Correct, yeah. I mean, everything else to reserve, they, they kinda gotta, you know, submit the money to reserve except for the ball diamonds. The ball diamonds, because there's nothing kinda built into what we currently got, they just get invoiced after. Another thing that I just, I just realized actually is volunteer management can be done through this. So volunteers can, can have their account and we can, you know, create something that we're looking for volunteers for, you know, this project and they can kinda go through there, sign up that way, you know, track their hours and everything like that, so.
Can I go ahead? So some of the things that Eve said during the public service is the other, he's focused on pretty much what the Parks and Recs can do, but this, with this program, each department, there's, you know, there's, he mentioned the inventory control. So say for the street department, this could be a, the inventory control module could be modified to, you know, log all the trucks that we have, create a file for those trucks. We could keep maintenance records on those trucks, you know, which I don't know how we do that now. I don't even know if we do that now, but that's one of the things that, that you could do with this program is.
Will that help implement a maintenance plan for the vehicles, the buildings and equipment?
As far as that side of it, I have not looked into that. But like I say, yeah, with the inventory control on there, you can sit there and, you know, and track everything, enter in, whether it's just notes, whether it's the mileage, you know, when, when last time services were done on it and stuff like that. Since most of the servicing is done in-house there, you know, keeping track of that, I think, would be simple.
So the things that, so the things that he's gonna use it for can be adapted for each of the different departments that we have. So it's, it's not just exclusively for the Parks and Recreation. I think that's important to know that.
So what module was this?
Which module is?
So she, she referenced the Grove City website. Were able to click over and look at that, that was Parks and Rec. Is there a specific module? Civic Plus sells a lot of things, a lot of different modules for HR, for taxes. They, they do a lot of things. So this is not a recreation-specific, you said?
It's not recrea, she, she said it was not recreation-specific, that it could be used through the different departments to track inventory and make reservations and send out messages. So it's kind of a general, it seems like it's more of a general, not park-specific.
I'd wanna know that for sure because this invoice says Civic Rec, one-year annual fee. They may very well charge more money when you start adding other things that aren't recreated, aren't recreation-specific. This is how they get paid, they sell these modules to do a lot of different things. Okay. Anything else for Mr. McKenzie today? Any other questions, anyways, kind of the city has to go. Nope?
Thanks for coming in.
Thanks, sir. Moving on to audience concerns, we have no audience concerns this evening. Move on to committee reports. Don't let me forget, when we get to new business, we need to renumber these. We'll move on to committee reports, starting with the Personnel and Finance Committee. Instead of going left to right, we're just gonna go in order here. Who's going to give the Personnel and Finance Committee report? Thank you. Councilwoman Traynor.
Personnel, Budget Finance Committee meeting was held on August five. Councilman Eads was absent, so that was just Councilman Hitt and myself present. The things that we talked about, many of which are coming up as resolutions later in the agenda, including the Tax Department requesting increase in appropriations to purchase fireproof filing cabinets. The Police Department needed an increased appropriations. This was insurance proceeds that the city received due to a run-in with a cruiser and a deer. There are some IT changes coming from the Auditors Department. State auditor recommended some modifications to their security programming, including password strength, frequent changing of passwords, dual authentication, et cetera, et cetera. That there is going to be a need to implement a disaster recovery plan at some point in the future, likely involving a software upgrade, not necessarily hardware. The USDA loan for the Police Department is gonna require an environmental study prior to approval of the loan application, that's coming up on the agenda. Talked about the Civic Plus program with Eve Bree Love. The, let's see, we're not to rehash too much of what Mr. McKenzie just talked about. There is a variance from roughly seven thousand to approximately thirteen thousand dollars. Let's see. The point of, Management System, Reservation Management, all that stuff we talked about. We did request that City Law Director take a look at not only the master license agreement, but the annual registration license agreement, which we're probably too lengthy to review in a committee meeting. And then City, Safety Services Director did bring up the need to probably deal with the alley that was just vacated between the city and the dentist's office. Next Finance Committee meeting is scheduled for September nine at five thirty.
Thank you. Did you have anything to add to that? Councilman Hitt?
Nope, that was.
Very good.
Very thorough.
Public Safety Committee will be next. Who's going to speak on that?
Service Committee. Yeah, I can give the general.
I'm sorry, Service, I'm sorry, Service.
I can give the general. What we reviewed and then Mr. McDaniel's gonna give the Rec Department report and Mr. Norman will give the Street Department report.
Okay.
So we had a meeting this past Tuesday, the thirteenth. We had a visitor came in that was, discussed the conditions of Willis Avenue and Mr. Long, the Superintendent for the Street Department, is going to make some repairs to that area to accommodate the people that live along there. We also talked about new park rules and Civic Plus, which we talked about tonight. And there's various legislation that's coming forward as far as the park rules and a dura patch machine that needs replaced. Rex, the Safety Service Director, talked about an accident that happened in the sanitation department with one of the trucks lifting the trash bins. We talked about the digital sign, the status of that and the plan is for that to go to the transit park. We talked about downtown sidewalks and their conditions from trees causing damages to those sidewalks. And then Mr. McDaniel discussed some of the equipment at the park that was removed and in storage. And that is, that is, the next meeting will be September tenth, I believe, at five o'clock in the meeting room next door. Make sure of that date here. Yeah, it'll be September tenth.
Councilman Norman, you had to add to the Public Service Committee report?
I, I have the, I have the Street, Street Department report. They're working on the Third Ward Storm Sewer Project. They're also working on the North Main Waterline. There's some work going on about that. They've done some mowing, they've been working on some crosswalks. Those lights, I guess, have been giving them trouble. They had some OSHA training. They had a touch-a-truck going on. Let's see. They placed some, they've replaced some of the older unreadable signs around town. Mowed some ditches. The dura patch was brought up that it's gonna need replaced. So we, we did talk about that and there was a meeting with ODOT, I'm assuming, about the route changes. And they're testing, looks like they're doing bore testing for the salt bar. And that's pretty much it.
So the route changes that you're referring to, please?
The state route changes, which were brought up during the last meeting for thirty-eight, forty-two, fifty-six and six sixty-five. So thirty-eight will, will no longer come down Main Street. It'll, it'll, it'll continue down to High Street to Midway and then you'll turn at Midway and head out. Six sixty-five will be expanded out to Midway down Center Street. And then fifty-six will stay the same, forty-two stays the same. So really, the biggest, the biggest is thirty-eight. Instead of turning, turning there at Main Street, they'll go down to Midway and head out of town. So hopefully that'll stop some of the traffic stops of those trucks trying to turn onto, on the main street during the middle of rush hour. You hope anyways, right?
Thank you, Mr. McDaniel, did you have something to add?
I have the Parks and Rec. Like I said, we talked about the new rules, but we're not gonna read that book tonight. We got the, the swimming pool, the pump was replaced for the racing and training pool that helped the Street Department. And it looks like they have a water aerobics instructor, Teresa Harsh. And they are, and they're back to school schedule now for the next two weeks. And the last day for the pool will be the twenty-fourth.
So they're, are they open during the week or just on the weekends right now?
The weekend.
Schedule.
Right there.
Oh yeah, there is a schedule down, you want it all?
Yeah.
Sunday noon to eight, Monday closed, Tuesday four to eight, Wednesday closed, Thursday four to eight, Friday noon to two, and that's for the racing and splash pad only. And Saturday noon to eight. And all that ends on the twenty-fourth.
Okay.
Last day. And then we had, like I said, we, we talked about maybe repairing or replacing some equipment at Cowling that are dangerous and fixing a catch basin over there that a kid hurt themselves on Saturday running. And they got the new picnic tables and trash cans. Seems like there's plenty of them to go around. Right now, it's sufficient. And it's a good thing because we need an expensive piece of equipment from the Street Department.
The place that Mary Mac?
They actually went around to, they got one at the Playground Shelter. They got five there at Mary Mac.
Primarily.
And the ball diamonds.
Okay.
Got two. I thought, I thought one was going to Cowling. Not at Cowling.
Just the ball diamonds, just the ball diamonds.
Primarily.
Right, yeah. They said that's plenty for now.
That it?
Yes.
Thank you, sir. Moving on to the Public Safety Committee, the chairman's not here tonight. We'll give you a break for a minute, Mr. Saul.
He gave it to me to do.
Pardon me?
He gave it to me to do.
Okay, that's good.
Public Serv, uh, Safety Service Committee met eight thirteen. Everybody was present. I'll be giving the police report and Mr. McDaniel will give the EMS report. Legislation will be coming to council with new codified ordinances. Copies will be given to each council member to, to proofread. And I'll be sponsoring that when we come back. We had, had no new business, the old business, we adjourned at six twenty. The Police Division, August thirteen twenty-four. Xavier Manville completed his OP TA Basic Academy and will graduate August fourteen. He will be sworn in once he completes the state exam and is certified. He then proceeds to complete his field training. We're currently accepting applications for police officers. We have two open positions for officers. We are working with the loan application reports for the building project that we're sworn in, intend to be submitted to the USDA Rural Development. All members successfully completed the annual firearms qualifications, including less lethal weapons. PET FBI, Ohio. In conjunction with the Mass County Humane Society, they donated a PET microchip scanner for the agency. They were, this will help to quick unite chip dogs with their owners at any hour of the day. They have handled thirty-two hundred seventy-five calls for service, seven hundred forty-five incident reports for the first seven months of twenty-four. Six hundred twenty-eight traffic stops initiated. All schools begin on Wednesday, August fourteenth, everybody be careful. Notable incidents, a wanted individual was pursued and eventually fled on foot to a cornfield where he was able to evade arrest. Assistant in search for the individual, a few days later, the center was able to locate the suspect in a wooded area and led officers to the location. He was arrested without further resistance. That's all I have.
Thank you, Eric. Mr. McDaniel's?
I have the Fire EMS report. And they did a departmental EMS training, bariatric emergencies through Ohio Health. The departmental EMS training, a high consequence infection through Madison Health. Departmental fire training on operations. Hosted several students for ride time for tolls. Provided EMS service for high school football scrimmage. They participated in the National Night Out, participated in Madison House Backpack Giveaway. They attended Rib Fest, attended Touch a Truck at London Public Library and attended Touch a Truck at Presbyterian Daycare. Busy once again, that's it.
Thank you, sir. Those are the committee reports, we'll move on to City Fish Report. Mr. Mayor?
First, I wanna welcome Matt. I've known Matt for a long time and I think he's gonna do a wonderful job at clerk, so appreciate him. Eve did text me back, 'cause I texted her your question, Greg. She said there's no additional or hidden fees for usage of Civic Plus. There's no limit on users or amount of things we can host inside the system. About tracking the vehicle maintenance schedule, she said that she'd have to look into that more, but we might be able to use the calendar system on that to be able to track something like that. And I know a lot of the information was sent to you guys. I don't know how much you were able to get through it. And then I know there was questions about all, all the legal jargon, right? So Jennifer read through that and I believe she sent you guys an email on that, if I'm correct. Just wanna tell all the students, teachers, faculty and staff, good luck on the new school year to all the local schools we have here. I stopped out to the jamboree for the football team and got some dinner before I came here and was talking to the superintendent and he said, "Everything's going pretty good so far and all the kids seem happy." I was able to go out with the Columbus Crew on the first day of school. They had the Columbus Crew come into the elementary school, one of the ex-players and their mascot and welcome all the kids and the majority of them seemed real happy to be back at school, so. Rib Fest just passed, I wanna thank everybody that came out. We did have a nice rainy Friday afternoon that pretty much killed everything, but we were able to bounce back and have a pretty successful event. Also, we had National Night Out, hot day for National Night Out. And, but I wanna thank the police and fire and EMS for being there and, and all the booths that were there. There was a lot of different, different people there helping put that event on and it was a successful event. We do have some ideas on how to make it bigger and better next year. But just appreciate those guys doing all that community outreach and getting out into the community and being seen and, and talking to the kids and talking to the parents. One of the best times of the year is coming up, we'll be starting negotiations, union negotiations, starting next week. So we'll be having that coming up real soon for you guys, hopefully, as we try to get these negotiations. these negotiations, these contracts done, so we can start working on the budget. Volleyball signups are still going on. They're a little slow rolling in, so if you guys see a post, share it for us. We're trying to make sure that we're able to get enough kids and get enough teams into that. So volleyball signups are going on right now for our youth volleyball league. I was speaking to a couple council members after our Public Service and Safety Service Committee meeting, and I just would like to bring it up again about possibly having the finance meeting that same night at 7:00. There's a lot of things that we really wanted to kick back into the finance meeting, but now we have to wait 20, 25 days before it can go back to finance. I think it would just make it more efficient if we were able to kind of knock all those out, so if something was in public service and public service said, "Yeah, let's do it," but it pertains to money, that we could just, an hour or 30 minutes later, have the finance meeting and be able to talk about it, discuss it, and then try to get it on the agenda and kind of help speed things up and get things moving a little bit faster. I know we talked about it at one time. Also think it would help with council members, where we could hopefully get more council members to all the different committee meetings. I know with Public Service and Safety Service, some come early and sit through the first one, they're not even on the committee, and then also stay for the second one. So it's just a suggestion, and I think it would help things out, just because there's such a big gap in between the Public Service and Safety Service to get it all the way back to finance for the next month. And then I hope you guys all enjoy August 28th, which is National Bowtie Day. So make sure to iron your bowties and get them on and enjoy the holiday.
And you're not even wearing one.
It's not August 28th. I'm saving them. I'm saving them. I'm gonna change them every hour of that day, 24 hours. Change one every hour.
Different time.
That's right.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
You mentioned the contract negotiations. We have three different unions, is that correct?
Correct. We have three different unions. So we have AFSCME, which would be our street and sanitation, as well as our, they call it clerks, but, you know, it would be the ladies that work in the different offices currently. Then we have police, and then we have fire and EMS. So we're beginning with AFSCME, and then we'll just roll, hopefully get that done and figure that out. But it's, we all know how the economy is right now. We all know how pays are going right now, so it's gonna be interesting negotiations, I think.
Okay. Any questions for the mayor? Okay. Thank you, sir. Was that your fun fact, the August 28th?
Yes. And if you don't have one, I'll lend you one, Greg. I'll even tie it for you.
Don't have. I think I once had one, but it was a clip-on.
Did it squirt water?
Gotta be real.
It's... Thank you, sir. We'll move on to old business. This is the third reading of Resolution 15924. Accept a motion to read by title and number.
Sue motion.
You pick one, Matt. It's either Mr. Stall or Mr. Norman. Who did you hear first?
Mr. Stall first.
Mr. Norman's gonna have the second.
I'll second.
Resolution 15924, sponsored by Councilman Trainer. A resolution adopting recommendations of the maintenance. Jonathan's Creek subdivision, parcel number 31, U of three, 399 dot computer.
Thank you.
Pat, I saw your email on what happened with the public hearing that was scheduled from the last council meeting, which was scheduled for September 5. And then all of a sudden, on today's agenda says public hearing has been scheduled for September 19. I understood that there was a little bit of a mix-up in getting the notice to the messenger with regard to that. I wasn't able to check to see if the notices actually went out, you know, if they actually went out.
I know that the auditor's office gets a newspaper. They make sure to get them one. I have not got to check. Like I said, when I saw that on the agenda, it just kind of hit me today when I was, when we were going through, we always go through the agenda, and I was like, why does that say the 19th? And then Josh came in, and that's when we figured out all this stuff. So I have not had time to look to see if it's been put into the paper. Apparently, it has. I don't know.
Notices had to be sent to all the adjoining property owners. Have those been sent, do we know?
You're talking to the wrong guy. Yeah, that would be a council, that'd be council president. I didn't even ask him about that, you know. But I think, like I said in my email, I just think there needs to be some kind of checks and balances to make sure that, especially with Matt being new, right? You know, hey, did we make sure we got those public notices out? Did we get those letters out? Things of that nature. Because, like I said, it's just, one, it's tough on the developers, and, two, it just kind of makes us look bad, I think, so.
You were council president, or when you were, I should say, when you were council president. Did you guys have a checks and balances system or anything in writing about this that you could forward on?
We did not, but I don't want to say anything negative about anybody, but I had Arlene, and Arlene did not miss a beat. We know. Like, now, if it would have happened and there would have been an issue, we probably would have come up with something. You know, I mean, looking back, I can say that, I guess, but Arlene never missed a beat when I had her, and she, public notices always went out, and they were always in the paper.
Okay.
And it was probably easier back then. Don't get me wrong, especially with, when the Madison Press was around, and you could put something in the paper and it'd be published the next, within two days. Now you have to have something in by a Tuesday to get it published by the weekend, and so...
So since this now has a public hearing scheduled for September 19th, we're not gonna take any action on this until after that, so we'll leave this on.
I do have a question.
Sir?
My question is, if we find out that the notices were not sent, what is our course of action?
Then it will give bounce back again. You have to give the 30-day notice. That's why we always count the days, right? The 30-day notice. Or we have to have a public hearing, it has to be 30 days or later. I think, I'd have to look it up or ask Jennifer. I know with, like, Planning Commission, it's 21 days, but we always, you know, give some time to get the things out and do all that.
So if it makes it to the paper?
It has to be twice, I believe.
Right, but not twice before their 30 days. I mean, it's just twice within.
Yes.
So there's that, but the notices that are sent to...
The property owners?
Property owners. We may still be able to do that with 21 days and not be in violation.
Yeah.
Okay. We're gonna have to find out if those were sent. Okay. Any further discussion on that? Okay. So we're gonna move on to new business, and the first thing we need to do in new business is, it appears that these resolutions are misnumbered, because we've already had Resolutions 161 through 164, including up to 165 and 66. So we're gonna have to renumber the resolutions tonight. And then, once we get these renumbered, I would like a copy of, I'd like to have those up here if you'll go get those, Mr. Norman, in just a minute. We'll let him renumber.
Okay.
First of all, 16124, Resolution 16124, according to what we can find out, so we're gonna do this in pencil, not in pen, 16124 should be renumbered to 16724. We looked at that, Mr. Norman looked at that, we looked through the old minutes, and then we believe that's the correct number. Would you agree, Mr. Norman?
Yes, yes.
So we'll accept a motion to renumber 16124 to 16724?
I make a motion.
Okay, in a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Tell you what, we'll just do these all, we're gonna do these all at once. And then 162, we'll, sorry about that, John. We'll back up. 16224 should then be renumbered to 16824. 169, I'm sorry, 163 should be numbered to 16924. And Resolution 16424 on our agenda should be renumbered to 17024. I'm sorry. We'll accept a motion now to do that.
I make the motion, please.
Second.
Okay. So we have a motion by Mr. Norman, a second by Mr. Stall. Is there any further discussion for this? I'm gonna add to it. We just need to check, we have documents over there that are printed on a legal form. I don't know if they came, where they came from, whether it was the clerk or the law director. Anybody could have misnumbered. We just want to make sure they're correct moving forward, so that's why we're gonna do this in pencil tonight. Okay, so, any further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor of renumbering these resolutions to the correct numbers?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Any opposed? Okay.
Do you want me to go get those?
Yeah. And after this, Matt, I'm used to doing this in a different way, in a different organization, so we'll do roll call votes after this, okay? Okay, thank you. Yeah, if you'll go down and get those, please, Mr. Norman. Looking at the email that was sent, we do not have copies of these resolutions that we can look at today. So we're at least gonna have those in front of us, in front of somebody, so that we can discuss that a little bit further. Unless you want to read these in entirety, Matt? You want to read the resolutions through the entirety?
Not really.
Okay, then we'll do by, by title and number, and you'll have those in front of you, right? So did we renumber 162? So you have copies, you're gonna renumber these also?
Yeah.
Okay, later. Okay. So 16724, resolution to read this by title and number?
I make a motion to read by title and number.
I'm sorry, did I say? Or did I say the wrong thing? I'm sorry. Well, we have a motion, I'm sorry. In a second?
Second.
I said the wrong thing. Very good.
Resolution 16724, sponsored by Councilman Trainer.
I'm not sure what else there is to say about filing cabinets needing to be replaced. They do have to have fireproofing and security and things like that, so they're a little more expensive than your run-of-the-mill filing cabinets. I did question the tax department about why we're saving paper, but apparently we're transitioning to all digital files slowly, but surely, but in the meanwhile, they still need fireproof filing cabinets.
And the amount of that, if you remember?
I think it's $10,000.
So that's why I asked for this. So the amount listed on the resolution is $10,000 to be appropriated from 240.70.52503, which is Office Supplies Taxation. Any discussion on this? And our wishes for this piece of legislation?
I don't think they needed an emergency clause.
No. No, she said they had time.
There is not an emergency clause on this document. Hearing no motions, we'll leave that on. Next, Resolution 16224, accept a motion to read by title and number?
168.
I'm sorry, 168. I slid the paper over, so I'm looking at the old number. Sorry, 16824, accept the resolution, or, sorry, I'll accept a motion to read by title and number.
Make a motion.
There we go.
A second.
In a second. Did you get that? No, very good.
Resolution 16824, sponsored by Councilman Trainer.
Again, I believe the police department already made the repairs. The cost was approximately $4,100. They have sufficient funding in their budget to make that repair while this goes through the motions. This is a reimbursement by the insurance company to replace those monies already expended by the police department. This was previously referenced as a run-in, it was a deer strike, I believe, for the cruiser. Nobody was injured except the deer.
This does say that it is $4,192.79 from 101.100.54005, Maintenance of Vehicles. What are our wishes for this?
There was no emergency clause requested by the police.
We'll leave that on. Moving on to 169.24. Accept a motion to read this by title and number?
Make a motion.
Well, it's either Mr. Stall or Mr.?
John Stall.
They want to fight over that.
John Stall, he can have it. And then Mr. McDaniel's seconded it.
Resolution 16924, sponsored by Councilman Trainer.
So this is related to needing an environmental study where the new police department would Believe the appropriation amount was $10,000, yes?
$10,000?
I'll take seat, $10,000.
$10,000 from Professional Services for General Government Fund, 101.790.5450.
Does that need a three reading suspended?
Sorry, please?
Does it need a three reading suspended? I don't think there was any emergency clause on it.
I move that we suspend the three reading rule.
Second.
I seem to recall that this application process is somewhat lengthy anyway, not had, and it's a USDA loan that will not be approved without this study being completed, so I think this would be an appropriate time to move it a little bit more expediently.
So I make a motion, we suspend the three reading rule.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. McDaniel's.
We have a motion to suspend the three reading rule by Councilman Norman, seconded by Councilman McDaniel's. Any further discussion to suspend? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Yes. 16924, the rule's been suspended.
We need to make an amendment to make an emergency clause on that, to expedite it?
It'll still go in effect within 30 days, but that's up to you.
I'll make a motion to add a emergency clause to that.
I'll second.
Motion is seconded to add the emergency clause to 16924. Further discussion?
Yes.
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 Yes. Motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt by Councilman Norman, seconded by Councilman McDaniel. Any further discussion? Nope. Go ahead.
Stall?
Yes.
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 16924 has been adopted with the emergency clause. Moving on to 17024. Accept a motion to read by title and number?
Make a motion.
John and Norman, Michael?
Mr. Stall and Mr. Norman both like to do this.
I wrote down Mr. Norman.
You wrote down Mr. Norman, so Mr. Stall will have the second.
I'll read you that, Tom.
Resolution 17024, sponsored by Councilman McDaniel. A resolution increasing appropriations, city administration, thanks for the soft program that's been...
Yeah, so this is the Civic Plus program. Yeah, so this is the Civic's, Civic Plus program that Mr. McKenzie kinda detailed earlier, and it's meant to enhance our current website and streamline some of the services that he could offer. It's not to exceed the amount of $13,088. And, as he mentioned, there's expiration dates on the cost of this program, I think six thou, or 7,000 till the end of August, and then it would go up to, I believe it was $10,000 something, and then $13,000 after that.
Be on that, yeah.
So, I don't know if we want to expedite this, save costs?
I did.
Or if anyone has any other questions?
Well, if you, if you noticed, it says annual uplift 5% to be applied in year two?
It's an increase in?
So, they're gonna increase the fees in year two by 5%?
I think the annual renewal was, was it $5,000?
Six, six thousand, yeah.
Six thousand, yeah.
But then, it could increase by 5% in two years, yeah.
So, I think the question, the big question is, is, do we want it? Because we don't, if we do want it, then the question becomes, do we wanna save that 7,000, or 6,000, I'm sorry, do we wanna save that 6? That's the question, do we, do we even want it? Because if we want it, it makes sense that we save $6,000. If we don't want it, then, or, you know, if we don't want it, then we don't want it, it doesn't ma, the rest really doesn't matter, and that's my opinion anyways. But if it is something that we do want, and we think will benefit us, $6,000 savings?
I think the city would benefit from having a more up-to-date process when it comes to, because if I recall, Eve did mention that this could do everything from, you know, permit applications to ball field reservations, and, you know, instead of having a piece of paper that has to be looked at by, you know, a pair of eyes and slide across somebody's desk or inbox, you know, that I, it, to me, it not only makes the city appear more timely, more professional, and maybe a little more transparent, I guess, since everything's out there, and, yeah.
I also think, like you do, I thi, I think it's, you know, we're trying to go more digital. We've been working on getting our minutes online, and, and this just kinda falls right into, like you said, transparency and digital and bringing us into the 20th century. And I think the, the big thing, the big takeaway that I got from Mr. McKenzie was, you know, instead of having to invoice and wait for that money to come in, you know, you pay, you pay as you play, you know, you're, as soon as you rent that ball diamond, we get that money, so.
I mean, very well said by Councilwoman Trainer and Councilman Norman, you know, ever since, you know, we've been doing this for a while, some of you guys have been up there, we've just tried to be getting into the 21st century, right? And, you know, with online bill pay and being able to pay things online and do these things, and with a child that's eight years old, I could tell you that a lot of signing up and doing things is done for me at about 9:00, 10:00, 11:00 o'clock at night, and it is difficult for people to get in here between 8:00 and 4:00 and fill out applications and do those things. And also, it helps take the human error out of it, right? So, if somebody comes in and Eve, Eve's not here, and Landon does it, and then Landon has to give it to Eve, or I have to give it, and then we have to look and make sure nobody's on there, and they're, you know, double booking and things like that, so, just helps take that human error factor out of it. And like you guys said, just making it more streamlined, putting us into the 21st century and another aspect of the city, and, so.
So, I have a couple additional questions, if you don't mind. Just with what the mayor just said, you're gonna eliminate people coming, what if they still wanna come in?
We're always.
I'll turn, I'll turn the mic on.
No, we're always open, I mean, we definitely, and we understand that too, right? Like, we still have the, the checkbook people, right? Just like we do for, you know, people still drop their water bills off here in Mid-Ohio, comes in and picks their checks up, and, so we still have those people, and we'll still offer that, and, you know, we can walk people through it. Eve's on the phone all the time with people, just walking them through how to do things and fill out permits online and things like that, so, we'll, we'll still be able to do that.
Okay, so if somebody walks in, they?
Yeah.
You'll do, you'll still take the piece of paper from them?
You're absolutely right, and we'll punch it in for them.
And you'll, there you go. What if, and this was just kind of a what if I thought of earlier, but I didn't ask it at that point, what if you have someone you've banned from our parks? They can still go online and reserve a location even though they may have been banned from the parks? I don't know if there's gonna be any checks and balances, I don't know if we've ever banned anyone.
I can't think of anybody that we have banned from renting anything, or, and I would as, I mean, you know, don't get me wrong, I was over here trying to help him out, and I'm not a tech savvy kinda guy, but I would assume there'd be some kind of failsafe in the backend, and we'll still see what everything that comes through. I would assume that every time somebody rents something, that there's gonna be emails sent to us that say, Joe Schmo rented this from this time to that time, or whatever.
There's, there's gotta be a way for them to see the reports, there's gotta be a report generally.
Yeah. And I mean, it, it would be the same thing also, right? So, you know, Greg, if you were kicked out of Cowling Park, you know, you could just have Michael come up and fill it out for you and rent it for you, right?
Yeah, I'd do that for him.
Well, I just thought I would ask.
We'd sneak him in.
I hope there's a failsafe put in place, you know, maybe their account, if, once that happens, you go in and you suspend their account so they can't do that.
Yeah.
Again, they could have their, you know, their best friend, neighbor, whoever, do that for them, but I just didn't know if that was something that was in place. I looked at the Grove City site today for a little bit, but I didn't come across that anywhere, so, I didn't know how that would be handled.
Does, does this have an emergency clause on it?
I think that, what was the expiration for the first, was it August, end of August?
Yeah, it's the end of August.
Right, so, just as a clarification, this says, City Council authorizes the city order to make the following appropriation from professional services, general government in the amount of $13,088, and that's Fund 101.790.54504. And if you look at the paperwork that was submitted, you know, if it's done, the total investment would be $7,088, so this should not exceed the $13,088.
No, and, and he's got the invoice here, the expiry for the first?
Twenty eight.
Level of service for, for early action expires on the 23rd of August, so it's today, or we pay $3,000 more.
I make a motion, we suspend the three reading.
Second.
Any further discussion on suspending that? We have a motion and a second. Mr. Clerk?
Yes.
Stahl?
Yes.
Eads?
Yes.
Trainer?
Yes.
McDaniel?
No.
Norman?
Yes. Okay, so the suspension fails. This will be left on for the next reading.
Is there, is there an emergency clause on that, though?
There is an emergency clause.
Okay. So?
I think the next expiration is September 9th, which?
So, I'm not really sure what happened here, but, okay, I mean, we're, we're putting this off so that we're gonna pay $3,000 more later on? Is that what we're doing?
Everybody has the right to vote the way they wanna vote, and when we're a person short, that is, that is, this is the correct procedure, it will not be suspended.
Right, so, I, I would maybe ask that we make a motion to reconsider, and Mr. McDaniel's, if you have any questions, because it sounds like people are in favor of doing this thing, right? I mean, if five members are looking to suspend it, I would assume that that means at least five members would be willing to vote for said legislation. So, if we don't suspend it, and it goes to three readings, and we're pretty much wasting $6,000 because of, and Councilman Eads is completely correct, we are a council member short tonight, and you do have the right to vote however you'd like to vote, but if it's gonna get passed, it just seems like we're just wasting $6,000 if we're gonna pass it in two meetings or whatever.
But if it, if it doesn't pass, or if it's not suspended at the next meeting, that would push it up to the $13,000, because the expiration date is September 9th.
I don't think so, it was October or something.
No, I thought it was November, or September 9th was the next deadline.
Well, we've had our discussion on this, and we had a, and the, the motion failed.
Right, but you, you can make a motion to reconsider. And I'm just asking Mr. McDaniel's if there's, you know, and he doesn't have to answer me, but I'm, I just was curious, you know, if, if there's some thought that, why you don't want this, or if you don't think it's a good idea and you wanna fail it? I mean, you can always suspend it and vote no against it, but it seems like it's gonna pass at some point, and it, and we're just gonna literally throw $6,000 away if it votes and passes next meeting, or votes and passes the meeting after.
Well, I've seen a lot of software purchased in the last couple of years, and I don't think you can purchase as much software as you want, but we're gonna need maintenance programs and everything, and this stuff is nice and all, but?
I'm, I'm sorry, I can't, I can't hear any, I apologize, I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
I stay with no.
Huh?
I stay with no.
Okay.
It's well within your rights, and quite honestly, Councilman McDaniel's is someone who's voted no to suspend before, you don't have to justify that in any way if you don't want to. A no vote is a no vote.
I'm not asking for a motion to reconsider, I wasn't asking to justify it, I'm just asking if you have any questions.
So, we're gonna leave this on, but if there's any further discussion, we can have further discussion, otherwise, no?
Nope.
Okay, we're gonna leave this on for this next reading, next meeting.
Got none.
Moving on to round table. We will start with Councilwoman Trainer tonight.
Hmm, I don't think I did anything. Sorry.
Do you have anything you wanna talk about, any upcoming events?
The only thing that's, that happened recently, and it just happened today, I'm kind of excited to get out of here, is one of the next things that we're, in addition to the special programming that we're doing at the London State Theater, just had delivered today a 1905 Mason upright piano, so that we can start hosting old silent movies?
Ooh, silent movies.
With live piano accompaniment, so.
And you'll be the accompaniment?
That's awesome.
Councilman Kit?
I'd like to thank Landon McKenzie for coming in.
Yep.
I know he's got a busy schedule, I appreciate him coming, coming in and detailing the Civic Plus, and hopefully that can go through next time.
Councilman Stahl?
Since school started, I'd be careful with kids out in the streets, they don't pay any attention sometimes, and also, good luck to all, all sports teams.
Good. Councilwoman Daniels?
I'd like to thank everybody for coming out. I'd like to see a maintenance program installed, just for the building and the vehicle, but also for the equipment. That's all I got to say.
Okay. Councilwoman Norman?
I'd like to thank Raymond for coming out. Welcome aboard, Matt, I'm looking forward to working with you. Sorry, we kinda just threw you into the mix tonight, I bet you, I'm sure the stress level was high, but you had all of us down there at one time trying to help, so, yeah, school, school's back in, so let's make sure we slow it down around the school area, for Labor Day's coming up, and I know the Ox Horse is in West Jefferson, but they're our neighbors down the road, so that's the next big festival coming up, and, so I hope we get to enjoy that. Other than that, have a great evening.
I'd also like to welcome Matt Edgington as our new clerk. I know that you filled in in the past, things have changed, obviously, there's always gonna be things, I don't know, I don't know that it matters who changes office, there's always something that gets a little bit left behind, or things that need to be done, so, we'll work through all of those things, we'll try to figure out this, these number systems. One comment, it's been over a year, at least, since we had crosswalk signals put in, and just the other day, I witnessed a lady pushing a baby carriage, literally about getting smacked by a vehicle. I seen her, she was coming from the left, on the far side, out in the far right lane, it was on High Street. I seen her, I stopped, the vehicle beside me either didn't pay attention, or they just thought they could make it, they didn't miss that young lady by two feet. She stopped and she waved at me, and, you know, I could see that she thanked me that I stopped, but, you know, we have to be better than that. The citizens of London, we drive through there, we have to be more cognizant of, well, when those lights flash, there's people trying to cross the street. And, you know, in Florida, which I recently visited, they're used to this, and they know to stop, and they know that they're gonna get tickets if they don't, but they also know as soon as the person crosses over from their lane, that they can go. But they don't have any problems with that, so, it concerns me that this, this much later, we're still worrying about whether or not people are gonna stop to cross the street.
I did circulate that research that I did on the physical sign that you can put in the middle of the street, especially the, the crosses that do not have the flashing lights, because it's, it's playing Frogger, any, anytime you try to cross the street. In London, there are so many motorists that are absolutely either aware of the law and choose not to follow it, or they're unaware of the law, and I think having a physical barrier that reminds motorists that it's their obligation to stop for a pedestrian and a crosswalk is a worthwhile expenditure. I've referred to the street department to consider making some of those.
Well, hopefully, they'll bring that so that we can finance that and get it done.
I think it's, well, I mean, they were very expensive.
In their budget to do it. Well, thank you, everyone, hopefully, Council President Peters enjoyed his night, he advised in the jamboree tonight that his son, who's a freshman, was going to participate, be participating at the varsity level, was a long snapper, and he just didn't wanna miss the first time his kid got to play varsity football, and I don't blame him, and we didn't have that much on the agenda. I will accept a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
And we are adjourned.